For one, welcome to the Bossier City Council. Today's date is the 3rd of April 2018, 3:00 PM. Have the call to order invocation Jeff Darby. Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Montgomery, please stand.
Father God, I give you praise and thanksgiving for this day. We thank you, Lord God, for those who are here in this place. We pray for them, we pray for their family, we pray for those who are fighting for our country and for our freedom. We pray, Father God, for leaders all over the nation. We ask you, Lord, to continue to direct us to do the things that are beneficial to those we serve. Thank you, Lord God, for your blessings. Thank you for all that you do for us. Lord, we ask that you give us direction in this meeting today. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag and join me in our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all call, please.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams? Absent. Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve minutes of March 20th, 2018, regular meeting. Dismissed with reading.
Some move.
Second.
Thank you. Counsel, please, cast your vote.
Mr. Montgomery? Thank you. All right, counsel, we have three add-on requests. The first one will be number 13, under new business, adopt a resolution to hire two foremen for the public utilities department, first and final reading.
No move.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Larkin. Mr. Irwin, anyone like to comment on this? We're adding item number eight, 13, to the agenda. Please cast your vote.
Counsel, the next item will be number 14, under new business, adopt a resolution to hire one assistant superintendent for the Northeast wastewater treatment plant, first and final reading.
Some move.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Irwin and Mr. Larkin. Anyone like to comment on this item to be added, number 14? Please cast your vote, counsel.
And the last one would be adopt a resolution, item number, I'm sorry, item number 15, under new business, adopt a resolution authorizing the city of Bossier City to prepare and submit a pre-application to the statewide flood control program for assistance in the implementation of a project for the purpose of reducing existing flood damages, providing for the necessary documentation of said flood damages, and providing for other related matters in connection therewith, first and final reading.
No move.
Thank you, sirs. Anyone like to comment on item 15 to be added today? Please cast your vote, counsel.
Now we'll need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Some move.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Irwin, Mr. Larkin. Please cast your vote, counsel.
Mr. Darby?
Yes.
We have today the honor of a contestant, Garrett Jacobs, and we're so glad and proud to have you here today and your family. Mr. Mayor is coming down.
Counsel, it's my pleasure today on behalf of all of you in the city to recognize this young man here. One reason it's so good, we've got a lot of people who are good at singing, or good at athletes, or good students, but he's the whole package. The only thing wrong with him, he's a little too tall.[379.31][379.31](Laughter). And his younger brother says he actually makes better grades than he does, but after looking at the information that we were able to get on you, Jared, it's a real pleasure for me to read this publicly and present it to you, and it reads as follows, you can stand at ease. Whereas Garrett Jacobs is an 18-year-old senior at Benton High School. He is a straight A student and is a proud member of the varsity football team and the varsity baseball team. He is also selected to be a part of the Bossier School Gifted Arts Program. And whereas, in the fall of 2017, Garrett sent a video to American Idol, the same week he was contacted and invited to New Orleans to audition in front of the executive panel, which led to his audition in front of the celebrity judges, and ultimately to win his golden ticket to Hollywood. And whereas his most exciting experience so far was when he landed in Los Angeles, at that moment, it all became real. His normal everyday life was gone, and he was beginning an unbelievable journey, indeed an exciting yet humbling moment. And whereas Garrett is enjoying the opportunity of a lifetime, although so many things have tamed for Garrett, some things haven't. A family who is his greatest fan, and they are here, friends who have his back, and most importantly, his unshakable faith in a very faithful God. Now therefore, I, Lorenz Walker, Mayor of the city of Bossier City, do hereby proclaim, Tuesday, April 3rd, 2018, as Garrett Jacob Daye in Bossier City, Louisiana, and ask the residents, as well as all of his friends and family, join with me in recognizing this wonderful accomplishment, and extend best wishes that he continues to sing for America, and witness thereof, and has sealed the city with my signature, and it's my pleasure to present it to you, Jared, and turn the mic over to you.
Thank you so much.[518.79][518.79](Applause).
I won't keep you guys too long, I just want to thank all of you very much for this amazing opportunity, and I want to thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for bringing me this far, and for, you know, paying the ultimate sacrifice for my sins, so that, you know, I can stand here with confidence today. And he gave me the voice that I have, and I'm doing the best I can to glorify his name. I want to thank my family for pouring into me my entire life. I want to thank my mom, my dad, honey Gavin, and then my girlfriend Brittany. And again, I thank you all for this amazing opportunity, and I will continue to represent Bossier City to the best of my ability.
Wonderful.[579.79][579.79](Applause).
Okay, family, come on up here and let's... Why don't the...
Where would you like to give it?
Just get it facing this way. We're gonna have the mics and everything, and plus we're gonna need to be back.
Okay, well, come on in, family.[622.79][622.79](Laughter).
Why don't you get by, you know, and I'll stand over here. How about that? Turn a little bit this way.
Do you give it in there?
Yeah, just do like that.
Got it?
Got it.
Okay, family.
Thank you so much.
Feel free to leave if you'd like to.
Thank you very, very much. It was so kind.[661.22][661.22](Applause).
Is the, is, which, which is the parents? Dad and mom?
Mama.
Okay, congratulations. Would you like to say something?[675.16][675.16](Laughter).
She's speechless, I can't believe it. No, I'm trying to cry. As all of you are, or some of you are probably parents and grandparents, when you hold that child for the first time in your arms, and you have all the wishes and the hopes and the dreams, and then to see them realize that, and step into that in a plan that God has laid out for them at such a young age, 17, or now 18-years-old, and to just see the possibilities. Possibilities are endless at 18 anyway, but in this particular situation, it's just such a blessing. So, thank you for recognizing that, thank you for what you do every day to make our home a place that people want to live. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are certainly proud of Garrett, and wish him God's speed and God's best. You did a wonderful job with him. Thank you so much. And do we have any committed reports? Next unfinished business.
Adopt an ordinance authorizing the sale of 10 acres of land at $55,000 an acre, with right of first refusal on an additional seven acres, to Hydraline LLC, and authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute any and all documents in connection therewith, final reading.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? Anyone like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote, counsel.
Adopt an ordinance authorizing the sale of five acres of land to Access Construction LLC at $55,000 an acre, and authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute any and all documents in connection therewith, final reading.
Some move. Discussion? Comments? Please cast your vote, please.
Adopt an ordinance appropriating $75,000 from the 2018 EMS Capital and Contingency Fund to purchase weapons and ammunition to protect responders in an active shooter scenario, final reading.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Anyone like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance appropriating $50,000 from the Hotel Motel Taxes Fund to support the Miss USA and Miss Teen USA pageants coming to the Shreveport, Bossier community, final reading.
Some move. Was there a second?
Sure.
Mr. Montgomery, thank you. Any comments? Anyone like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote.
New business, item number one, witness opening of sealed bids for sewer sub-basin 19 rehab.
Counsel, the engineer's estimate on this project is $2,489,338.50. The budget is $2,500. It's funded from the 2016 DEQ Utility Bond. There was one addendum, modifying the contract documents, changed drawings, answers to questions, and the mandatory pre-bid meeting attendees. The bid is from David Lawler Construction, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. It's for $2,595,295. The next bid is from J-Bar Corporation. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included, it's for $2,481,509.10. The next bid is from PM Construction and Rehab LLC. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included, it's for $1,885,982. The next bid is from Poli Construction. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included, it's for $1,996,000 even. And the last one is from Wicker Construction, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included, it's for $3,871,000, I'm sorry, I ask that you approve the reading of these bids.
Some move.
Counsel, please, cast your vote.
Witness opening of sealed bids for Hope Street Sewer Main.
Counsel, the engineer's estimate on this project is $278,500 even. The budget is $350,000. It's being funded from the sewer contingency fund. There was one addendum, modifying the contract documents, listing the attendees to the non-mandatory bid meeting, changes to drawings, and answers to questions. The first bid is from ASB Utility Construction LLC. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included, it's for $234,380. The next bid is from David Lawler Construction, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included, it's for $420,720. The next bid is from FH Management Group, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included, it's for $297,041. The next bid is from JPD Construction LLC. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included, it's for $288,164. The next bid is from Poli Construction. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included, it's for $269,200. The next bid is from Wicker Construction. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included, it's for $269,085. And the last bid is from Yorwick Construction Company, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included, it's for $274,547. I ask that you approve the reading of these bids.
Some move.
Second.
Thank you. Counsel, please, cast your votes.
Introduce an ordinance to amend the Unified Development Code by adding Section 4.3.3 and Section 5.7.4, Barksdale Boulevard Redevelopment Overlay District, first reading.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? And the floor is open for anyone who would like to comment. Please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance appropriating $215,000 from the 2018 EMS Capital and Contingency Fund to purchase nine Ucap inventory management machines and lockers, first reading.
Some move. Second. Any discussion? Any comments? Please cast your vote.
Mr. Larkin? Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of three police officers, first and final reading.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Anyone would like to comment? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing a promotion from within and the hiring of one employee due to a termination in the customer service department, all within the existing budget, first and final reading.
No move.
Second. Discussion? Anybody would like to comment? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to fill one vacancy in the Public Works Department, first and final reading.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Comments? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one records clerk, first and final reading.
Some move.
Anyone would like to comment? Please cast your vote, counsel.
Approve report of change order for security upgrade at the CenturyLink Lighting Controls Improvement Project Number 3-17, an increase of $86,270. Total cost of contract with increase $420,540.
Some move.
Second.
Thank you.
What is this? Please. Just thought I'd wake everybody up, you know. Everybody seems to be a little lethargic today.
This was a project to fix the lighting controls and provide security upgrades at the arena. And we bid this project, and our low bidder was Wicker Construction Company, and we commenced to building the project. And then the council voted the $3 upcharge on tickets to raise money to provide for other improvements at the arena. And there was a list generated of many projects. And some of those projects were the perfect fit for Will Hite to include in this project, thus the change order.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Anyone out there would like to speak on this item?
Do you have something else to say, Mark?
No, sir, I'll anticipate perhaps another question.
Question, would you like us to ask?
Counsel, we have a motion made by Mr. Montgomery, second by Mr. Irwin. Anybody want to comment? Please cast your vote.
Approve report of change order number one for the Landau Lift Station Rehabilitation Project for an increase of $14,289.39. Total cost of contract with increase $137,789.39.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Floor is open. Please cast your vote, counsel.
Hearing of appeal for Jeff Leach, 2031 Bermuda Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, 7/11/05, for violation of City Ordinance Section 14, vicious and dangerous dog.
Counsel, I'm not sure if Mr. Leach is here or not.
I called and left him a message, counsel, and I never heard from him again, so...
So, your recommendation?
Well, we've already declared the dog vicious because there were violations of the dangerous dog ordinance. The dog had been removed from the residence it was at and authorized to be at, and he did not report the move. The signs and such were taken down, and then we subsequently, about six months later, found the dog running at large in Bossier City, and it wasn't wearing its collar, and the registration had also expired and not been renewed. The dog was not on a leash or with a muzzle, so consistent with the ordinance, we declared the dog vicious.
So, we need a motion?
To appeal the finding of your department, right? Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Montgomery. Second, Mr. Irwin, and there's nobody here who represent the owner or this, this dog? Okay, counsel, please cast your vote. Hearing is closed.
Adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City, which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirement for repairs to the ozone system emergency generator at the water treatment plant at a cost of $37,000 from the Water Capital Contingency Funds, first and final reading.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? And the floor is open for anyone who would like to speak? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to hire two foremen for the public utilities department, first and final reading.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Anyone? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to hire one assistant superintendent for the Northeast wastewater treatment plant, first and final reading.
Some move. Second.
Discussion? Anyone would like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the city of Bossier City to prepare and submit a pre-application to the statewide flood control program for assistance in the implementation of a project for the purpose of reducing existing flood damages, providing for the necessary documentation of said flood damages, and providing for other related matters in connection therewith, first and final reading.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? And this is the last item. Anyone would like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote, counsel. Any comments? Yes, sir.
I received a phone call about an hour ago from Mimi out of CSRA that confirmed that GM, General Dynamics, has purchased CSRA, and there should be a public release paper out there already, and I guess it's effective immediately, and it'll change their name slightly, and so it's a done deal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other member of the council would like to speak? Anyone? This meeting stands adjourned.